This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, Hasslet.
Good evening, Council.
And good evening, uh, audience, citizens. This is the probably, Councilmember Rob. I bet this is the largest assembly we've had in here in years, couple of years.
That's right.
How about that? Very good. Well, glad to see it. I'd like to call to order the Hasslet City Council, May 2nd, 2022, at 7:01 PM. There is a quorum present. We have Mayor Pro Tim Morrow, Councilmember Clark, and Councilmember Rob in the chambers. And Councilmember Ricketts is unfortunately ill. And Councilmember Nahera is traveling on business. There's a chance that Councilmember Nahera may join us via teleconference later in the meeting. If so, I will recognize him at that time. Otherwise, if you bow your head with me, please. Thank you, Almighty Father. We give you all the glory that you have. We thank you so much for the many blessings that you've given us, the guidance that you give us. We ask that for your continued grace. Jesus' name, amen. And if you stand from being a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty as its draw.
It gives me a great pleasure. The next item we have is proclamations. We have two of them. And the first one will be regarding Mental Health Month in the city of Hasslet. And, um, I will read this proclamation from here, and then I'll step down. And we have Ms. Julie Wright, who is the Program Manager for Denton and Wise Counties, Community Health Improvement, Texas Health Resources. Thank you.
Oh, and now you can hear me because it's on. Sorry, I don't do this very often, but we just wanted to say thank you tonight. I'm also here representing the Wellness Alliance for Total Children's Health of Denton County, which is led by Cook Children's. So I'm kind of here both as my job and as a volunteer in the community. I live right up the road in Harriet Creek. My kids are Northwest kids. So this is home for us, too. This is my library.
Very good. Thank you so much.
But we just want to thank you for recognizing that mental health is essential to our overall health and well-being. One in five adults in the United States experience mental illness in a given year. For Denton County, that's over 167,000 of us. Additionally, one in five adolescents have or will have a serious mental illness in their lifetime. Fortunately, there is hope. Mental health illnesses are both common and treatable. And we appreciate the city of Hasslet for helping us increase awareness of the mental health conditions and resources as part of Mental Health Awareness Month. So thank you.
Thank you. As proclamation from the mayor of Hasslet, Texas, May 2022, Mental Health Month with the city of Hasslet. Whereas the Denton County Behavioral Health Leadership Team, Denton County MHMR, sent United Way of Denton County and Wellness Alliance for Total Children's Health of Denton County, led by Cook Children's, through their unique partnership and prevention-based approaches to serving children and adolescents, are effectively addressing the mental health needs of children, youth, and families in all our communities. Whereas addressing the complex mental health needs of children, youth, and families today is a fundamental to our future. And whereas the citizens of the city of Hasslet value their overall health and that of their families and fellow citizens, fellow citizens, and are proud to support observances such as Mental Health Month and Children's Mental Health Awareness Day. And whereas only half of Denton County parents are not familiar with mental health services in their community. And whereas the need for comprehensive, coordinated mental health services for individuals and families for our community is critical. Whereas there is a strong body of research that supports and identifies specific tools that all Americans can use to better handle challenges and protect their overall health and well-being. And whereas each citizen, local business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, and faith-based organization shares the burden of mental health concerns and has a responsibility to promote mental health wellness, recovery, and support prevention efforts. Whereas it is appropriate that a month should be set apart each year for the direction of our attention towards mental health education and the support of treatment and recovery. And whereas it is appropriate that a day should be set apart each year for the direction of that attention toward our children's mental health and well-being. And now, therefore, fair resolve that I, Gary Halsey, mayor of the city of Hasslet, do hereby proclaim, May 2022 as Mental Health Month, and May 7, 2022, as Children's Mental Health Awareness Day. And I call upon our citizens and all agencies and organizations interested in meeting the mental health of all in need and to unite this month in observance and participation of such activities and programs that will increase the awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the resources for appropriate and accessible services for all mental health conditions. Ms. Wright? I would like to say that I have, I won't call it firsthand knowledge. I'm not particularly educated, but my daughter is a doctor in psychology practicing in Mississippi. And you have the awareness. And prior to her education, I was, I got to claim, I was rather ignorant about these things. And there's a real need out there. Denton County and the program here says Ms. Wright is offering their top-notch. And I again thank them for bringing this to our attention. Our next proclamation. Emergency Medical Services. You know, we just do not understand what all goes behind the scene. And we have Mr. Ken Simpson, the CEO of MedStar. Mr. Simpson, please step up. They do a fine job, and we just don't know what all happens in the background. Can you just give us a little introduction to yours? We'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you, mayor and council. My name is Ken Simpson. I'm the CEO for MedStar Mobile Healthcare. We've been your EMS provider for over 35 years now. So we work within our system a lot. And with the help of Chief Mays and other first responder chiefs, work very hard to make sure that we deliver an EMS service that meets the needs of the community, both in the emergency and the non-emergency side with things like you were just talking about with, with mental health and really helping to try to navigate patients to the right areas, whether they're having a heart attack or, or they just need social services. So we greatly appreciate the recognition. And later on this month, I'll be coming back to do a little bit more formal presentation and give you a little, little deeper dive into what we do.
Thank you so much. I have this proclamation from the mayor of Hasslet, Texas, May 15 through 21st, 2022, Emergency Medical Services Week. Rising to the Challenge. Whereas Emergency Medical Services is an essential public service. And whereas the members of MedStar, Hasslet Fire Department, and Tarrant County Sheriff's Office provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. Whereas EMS agencies and personnel have expanded their roles by providing important preventative and follow-up care and access to telemedicine and providing crucial services during the COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas EMS and the other first response personnel are facing unprecedented challenges with response volumes and personal risk. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishment of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, therefore, in recognition of our emergency medical service providers, I, Gary Halsey, mayor, hereby proclaim the week of May 15 through the 21st, 2022, as Emergency Medical Services Week with the theme EMS Rising to the Challenge. And I encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I, I personally, I, I, it's just one of the great benefits to have this role, to be as mayor of Hasslet, to make these proclamations and give these people credit for the things that we kind of sometimes just take for granted. But anyway, great services they all provide. Item four, citizen participation and comments. Ms. Montgomery, I understand we might have a couple of speakers on item four here. Would like to address the council on non-agenda items.
Yes, mayor, I have one in hand. It's Michelle Johnson.
Hello, Ms. Johnson. Please state your name and your address.
My name is Michelle Johnson. My address is 1226 Caraway Lane. Um, I wanted to actually talk about the Harmon Road. There's going to be some construction that's going to be shutting down and turning it into a one-way. And several of the community members of Caraway are just wondering how that flow of traffic is going to be affecting our community at that point.
I think as I briefed you before, there won't be any response.
That's, that's.
But we can answer that later.
Okay, not a problem. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. So if we would take note of that, Ms. Montgomery, replying to how that one-way track will affect the community. Are there any other speakers that, on item number four, comments to the council? Are there any online? All right. Uh, there's none in the chambers, none online. So let's move to item number five. Items of community interest. May 7, 2022 is election day. At the Legacy Learning Center, 501 Schoolhouse Road. There's many items on this ballot, constitutional amendments, down to our local elections. So be, please go out and get your sticker. I voted. Uh, 5B is May 14, 2022, is residential spring cleanup. Uh, that's where you can bring your refuse, your tree trimmings, whatever you have, to the fire station. Just behind the fire station is the collection point, and we will receive those at 8 to 12 noon, correct? Anything else you want to say about that, please?
Yeah, this is kind of, it's a large item, but we also do have mobile shredded there at the event. So if you've got a box of, you know, old records, paperwork that you don't want anybody else to get a hold of, you can bring it up, and they will shred it right in front of your eyes and haul it away for you.
Very good. What about, let me ask, is, you know, old, you know, paint or batteries or anything like that?
No, we don't longer do that. Painter batteries now. You call our waste service, and they actually want you to bring it out. They pick it up on your property, on your porch. They do porch pickup. It's the done by call. So you have to call them and tell them you have it, but they will come by and pick that up personally for you.
Is there additional charge for that service?
No additional charge. It's part of our contract with them, so they will come to your house and pick it up.
Very good.
So if you've got any old paint, any old chemicals, poisons you've used that you don't know what's left in there or what they are anymore, they will, just give them a call, they'll come by. If you don't know how to get a hold of them, you can call City Hall, talk to Sabina. She can get you in contact with them real quick.
Very good. Very good. 5C is a notice of a possible quorum. On Wednesday, May 18, 2022. If the city does not receive the official election results from Tarrant County in time for the Monday, May 16, 2022 council meeting, council will meet on Wednesday, May 18, 2022, at 7:00 PM to canvass the vote, the May 7, 2022 general election results. No other action will be taken, will take place at this meeting. A notice of possible quorum will be posted no later than 5:00 PM Friday, May 13, 2022. Let's move on to our updates. Community park projects. Mr. Rogers.
Uh, mayor and council, that you will be seeing here on 8A, you will see the full presentation of what's going on with park projects. And then on our 6B, our Public Works Equipment Purchases, our large Public Works Service Truck is in, it's in the shop being outfitted. There's no date yet on when it may come out of that shop, but it is at the shop, so we know it at least is moving somewhat forward. Haven't heard anything on our truck yet. Uh, our mini excavator, they're telling us probably four, five more weeks, and we should be seeing that hopefully. And then we did last Friday do a demo of a remote mower. This is something kind of new. It's really mostly made for mowing along steep rideaways, along bridges, things like that. It'll cut up to about a one-inch tree down. And I will tell you, my generation, we're a little slow getting used to how it works, but our younger generation employees grab this thing, and next thing, they're running this thing all up and down the hills like they've been doing it all their life. And we're, we're keep being told that's kind of the coming thing someday down the road that there's going to be more and more of this robotic-style mowing, rather than sitting out there on a mower all day long. You're going to sit maybe in a truck with a little set of joysticks and a TV screen in front of you and just mow away. So it's kind of a cool thing. It was really neat to watch. I've got a little video that, James says he can maybe get it uploaded to the website or with Katrina's help, I think. So maybe that'll be something kind of cool to look at. And that's pretty much it. Does she got questions?
Very good. You know, I just can't help but smile to think, you know, robotic mowing, you know, and it's a neat piece of equipment. It's got a very low center of gravity. You're telling me it can, it can mow on a 50-degree incline?
It can mow even steeper because they also come with a winch that you can set it up on a really steep, you drive the stake in the ground, hook this thing up onto it, and it will go down to the bottom, and then it'll winch itself back up, and it'll go back down to the bottom and winch itself back up. So it can mow really, really steep slopes if you really want it to. I mean, it is crazy to look at with its big, huge treads on this thing. It's got tracks, rubberized tracks, and it can go all over the place. It is really something to see.
Can you program my address into this thing?
That's what's, that's what's really neat about the, the technology is moving towards, you would actually could GPS, like our park, you could GPS out where facilities are in it and the boundaries. And eventually, you're going to have one that you'll go out there and sit there, and a guy will hit it, and it'll start doing it, and he'll, he'll be there as this, hit the stop button if something happens. He'll be just watching it on the TV screen all day long. So it's kind of a neat, neat emerging technology that, you know, and these younger people, they are really good at operating them joystick. They are really fast at picking that up.
You know, I know this is for the older crowd, but any of y'all remember Dick Tracy? No, he'd talk on his wristwatch. Well, we're, we're way past that.
We are there. We're past that time.
Well, very good, David. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Item number seven, council, consent agenda. 7A is approval of the April 18, 2022 regular city council meeting minutes.
I make a motion to approve as presented.
Motion is made to approve the minutes as presented. Is there a second?
A second.
There is a second. I will roll call vote. Mayor Pro Tim Morrow.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Rob. Uh, with Councilmember Ricketts and Councilmember Nahera being absent, motion passes. We go to item eight, public hearings, ordinances, resolutions, and action items. 8A, discuss, consider, and act regarding a tennis court project as the park improvement project for 2020. Mr. Rogers.
Yes, mayor and council. Uh, on April the 13th, 2022, the Park and Recreation Board met. They went over the funding and possible projects, which there was a fairly long list of projects that they could fund towards. And you can see on this slide here, that's the funding. They had a total funding of $419,000 for projects this year in the park. And looking at the projects they had, they came away with wanting to do the tennis court project, which is a $385,000 project. And as we discussed in the meeting, uh, that's probably, don't get too carried away because with the way prices are going, you know, we want to get this out on the street, find out hopefully that 418 is going to be enough to cover the project, maybe have a little bit of contingency money to cover anything that we might run into. But they were all unanimously wanted to move forward with that project. We had a lot of other projects. We had benches, shade covers, we had electricity running around the inner portion of the park around the basketball court with some additional lighting and stuff. We had lighting project for our entire path trail project. And then we also had a drainage project for the upper trail crossing that crosses there across the Henryade Creek there in the park. And, but this was the project that after all of those that are looking and sifting through them, they decided this was the project they wanted to move forward with. So that's why they recommended to the council for this to be their 2022 project. You can stand. Yes, those are the ones not picked. That's where they were located. That's the project they did decide to go for. Mm-hmm. And there is, at the last part of that, you will see the actual cost estimates for each one of the projects and what was involved in each one of those projects. Yep. Anybody that's been around long enough knows this is the probably oldest project on their list was the tennis courts. Next would have been, uh, the upper trail crossing, then going with the power around the basketball court, the path trail lighting, and the youngest was shade covers and benches over in Gamma Park. I mean, that's kind of how they stepped down. So they're, they're knocking off the oldest project we've had on the list now for. Well, the, the process started 21 years ago, I believe. So, but yes, it's been on the full-blown list for the last four years. So it has been a long time coming, so.
Stephen, would you, uh, on the, there's a cost breakdown. There's three sheets involved. And would you go to the first one? It's below all the plans.
Nick?
There.
There you go.
Okay.
That top one right there on that is the.
Next one, you're, you're past it. Go one more. There you are.
That's the one right there at the very top of that sheet.
And the, the remainder are the cost breakdown of the other projects, which were not selected. It's only this first project that you see here.
Unless y'all really want to make the park board mad and go pick some other project, uh, but that's the one they want to do.
And no.
You owe my two cents worth, yeah? No, please, no.
Uh, very good. Uh, and then is there your line items for the different costs? There's nine line items there. Uh, any more on presentation?
No, now it's up to y'all.
All right. Let's go to item two, discussion. Council, it's yours.
Mr. Rogers, for you, sit back down, sorry. On the item description, the tennis court surface striping, is this also going to have the lines for the pickleball court as well?
Some called the ghost lines, whatever. It will have both. It will have tennis court lines, it will have ghost lining that will be turned the exact opposite way for pickleball, it'll also be used on there.
Good, thank you. And then the orientation was, I remember we had a lot of talk about the orientation of the tennis courts. This is.
Oh, yeah.
Where they want it and.
That is the exact direction for the sun.
Those are my questions. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Council. Very good. Council, Councilmember Rob.
No, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Morrow asked Mike.
Good. If there's no more discussion, I would entertain a motion.
I just, I just wanted to say real quick, I appreciate having the, I, I know how long this has been coming with the tennis courts, but I also appreciate having, um, the numbers for all the other projects. So it's something that council can keep in mind with future projects.
And that's, uh, thank Mr. Rogers. He assembled this package and knew you would need that, need and want that background information, too. And you have park board members listening to this. And you have park board members listening to this. Very good.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the tennis court project as the park improvement project for twenty twenty-two. Do we need to have a dollar amount or just give it as that?
It's in the packet and you can state it. It makes that.
Okay, estimated at three hundred and eighty-five thousand.
Motion is made to approve the tennis court project as a park improvement project for twenty twenty-two at an estimate of three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
There is a second. Any further discussion? All right, I have a roll call vote. Mayor Proton Morrow.
Aye.
Council member Clark.
Aye.
Council member Rob.
Aye.
Council member Ricketts is away sick. Council member Nahera is traveling for work, not present. Motion passes. Item eight B, discuss, consider, and act regarding requests for waivers of the city of Hasslet Park rules for the independent celebration fireworks and parade event. Mr. Rogers.
Mayor and council, again, uh the park and recreation board at their April thirteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting uh discussed and came back with recommendations to request that the city council grant waivers to the Hasslet Park uh rules for this year's independent celebration event. Uh, this is for things. We have rules in the park. Since we've moved the event to community park this year, we need six different waivers. We need a waiver to grant the Parks and Recreation Board to allow parking on unpaid surfaces during the celebration. But it will be on July the first twenty twenty-two. I also want to grant, ask to grant a waiver to the Parks and Recreation Board to allow motorized vehicles on unpaid surfaces at the independent celebration. And want to ask to have a grant of a waiver to the Parks and Recreation Board to allow the parks to remain open after ten P M. Again, for that same independent celebration, July the first twenty twenty-two. They ask again also that a waiver be granted to the Parks and Recreation Board to allow amplified sound system after the ten P M at the independent celebration. Number five was to grant a waiver to the Hart Parks and Recreation Board to allow temporary signs for the independent celebration. Number six was request to grant a waiver to the Hart Hasslet Parks and Recreation Board to allow the temporary closure of Main Street, Schoolhouse Road, Gamma Street, First Street, and Second Street for the Independence Day Parade uh to be held on that July first uh twenty twenty-two. And anyone who's been there once the parade's over with, all of Schoolhouse Road, all those other most, all of them open up except for the very ends of First and Second Street, which are in the park.
Very good. Any anything else on presentation? Can't council, you got anything to ask with regard to this presentation phase? All right, well, let's go to discussion then. It's to you, council. Uh, there's a lot of waivers there. Um, I I'm going to make a suggestion if if you're so inclined is you can uh make a motion just to grant all waivers requested for that July. Anyway, nonetheless, uh council, it's yours.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the request to grant all waivers to the City of Hasslet Parks rules for this year's independent celebration event to be held July first twenty twenty-two.
Motion is made to approve all waivers of the City of Hasslet Park rules for the independent celebration fireworks parade event July first twenty twenty-two. Is there a second?
Sure, I'll second.
There is a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Mayor Proton Morrow.
Aye.
Council member Clark.
Aye.
Council member Rob.
Aye.
Council member Ricketts and or and the council member Nahera are not present. And a motion passes three zero. Eight C, presentation and discussion of traffic mitigation signage and markings. Mr. Rogers.
I'm sorry, um, we do have a request to speak at this. Do you want to do that now?
We maybe we maybe we do a presentation and then that kind of qualifies what we're talking about. And then we'll have our speaker or speakers and uh we just have a reference then. So let's go ahead and go with the presentation, please.
Uh, this is just, this isn't something that we're trying to jump on and, you know, we got to do all this. This is just things that we see in the day-to-day around town, places where we've been called about, things happening around town. So there are things that we see, things that need to be updated. Our uh traffic management plan we currently have has not been updated. It was done in twenty thirteen, the last update that was done was twenty seventeen, so it's getting on up there in age. And so it's time to redo that. And these are just like listing and locations of all the different things we see with all the new neighborhoods, all the new traffic patterns we're seeing around town, things that need to be added or at least looked at from the, you know, the council standpoint. There's a lot of them there alone, one fifty-six that now with the traffic pattern, you know, we have a lot of backup that we've got a lot of blocked entries into all the neighborhoods up and down one fifty-six that need to be signed, but those all have to move forward through text dot and meet their requirements and get their approval to even do. So that takes a long period of time to start. And then we have a few simpler ones. There there's one here in town. We have one entire of every four-way intersection in all of Old Town. We have only one that's a two-way stop. Every other one in Old Town is a four-way stop. Why that wasn't done years ago, it probably was just an oversight. Somebody just missed it. Uh, but that's one that's simple, probably can be just added to the plan. Rob, for y'all, we can move that one forward quick. But down here in Old Town, we're having the same problem. People blocking coming out off of Hurley Street, coming out of Gamma Street. The only street you can get in and out of somewhat is Main Street most of the time. Uh, so this is just a whole list for y'all to look at. And there are a lot of things on this list. We have Caraway. We're looking at a new stop pattern there at their main entryway because of, again, the backup of traffic. We just have so many people passing through our town every day and like that particular one every afternoon. That's when it really gets hit hard uh with people jumping off, trying to get around the really big backup out on I thirty-five W. So this is just a, it's not an all-encompassing comp. It's just what we know of today and what we've heard about today. So, I mean, there may be ones that y'all have heard about we don't even know about. So it's just something we need to get get the ball rolling and try to get this updated. I say it is very old and it's with the growth in our area. It's time to at least try to get somewhat caught back up. Uh, there are some requests for some speed humps in some of the neighborhoods, all these things, all these things need to be looked at. And those all require time and data. You know, we have to put out speed trailers to start collecting the data on what speed people are traveling and how fast they're going through different parts, and that all takes time also. And so with budget time coming up, this is one of the things that we're looking at uh bringing forward. So this is just, like I say, it's just the start of a bigger project.
Could you just touch lightly in summary on two items? One is touch on the uh school zone there at LaTerra of N I S D, the school zones there. Just touch on that, kind of what status is.
That one.
And then also in general, what it takes to get one-stop sign installed.
Okay, uh, the school zone issue over there, this is something that came up. We've never, they've never had a final done on anything to do with the elementary school over there. And when their poles started breaking and falling down, we found out one city has done no inspections on them. They're not included in the C F A for the project nowhere. Uh, we ran out and repaired them, but technically they don't even belong to us yet. They basically belong to the developer because I don't believe the I S D, there's no place that they would have accepted them. But we ran out, spent quite a bit of money getting them backed up and running at least until they get a study they're working on through their engineer at the I S D for that entire section of John Day. As we've got elementary school there to the west, we're going to have a new middle school opening up there on the east of John Day, a future high school also on that section of John Day. It needs to be looked at today as an overall holistic full plan. Uh, a lot of the things that happened that nobody thought about was that you have that one little neighborhood there on the east side of John Day Road down there in the corner. And a lot of those people, their parents, their their kids, they want to walk to school. And they have to cross that four-lane roadway. Nobody ever thought about a school zone crossing of any kind being there, anything. There's no stop signs there. There's nothing. It's just wide open road. Take your chance and get across. Same thing happens. They're going down the Tarot Ranch Road all the way up to the elementary school. There's a lot of walkers in that neighborhood and a lot of younger families. So that a lot of kids go into that elementary school that live in that neighborhood. And they have sidewalks and all, but no crosswalk anywhere to get to the school, none marked anyplace in that entire neighborhood. And so that's something that we mentioned to them. This needs to be looked at as a whole plan. What all really needs to be done to that neighborhood? Not just, I would need to throw up a couple of, you know, signals here or there. It's what does it really need overall? And what will it need to service the next school and the high school when it comes online? All of that needs to be looked at because that's going to be a very busy area when you have all three of those schools coming in the mornings, leaving in the afternoon. That is going to be a busy area. Those speed limits on John Day Road, everything in that are looking at. So it's it it's a project all into itself, pretty much, it's so long to have to deal with.
Very good.
Big thing. Yeah, as you're saying, a stop sign, just a stop sign, single stop sign. By the time you put it all together and install it, one, it's going to run around eleven to twelve hundred dollars for one. Then you had stop bars and some stuff that goes along with that and labor. But I mean, you're so you're looking at a pretty fair price. Uh, every speed hump we ever decide to do, that's five grand roughly a piece. And that's only if you can find someone who you got to usually do at least half a dozen of them at a time to get any kind of pricing on it. It's hard to get anybody to build one.
Describe the process, our administrative process, just to install a stop sign.
To get one done, what we do under ours, we have uh our traffic management plan. If somebody comes in, somebody requests it, and that can come from either internal or external, doesn't matter. It is brought in. Once we get it, then that starts the wheels rolling. We go out, we have to do some traffic analysis done there. Usually depending on what it is, sometimes it's nothing for us but setting up a speed trailer. Sometimes it's sitting watching or it's going back to the fire department and our sheriff's department. You know, have we had accidents here? What kind of things may have happened? And we try to compile all of those data. Then for an ordinance, we have basically two options. We go to a full-blown traffic study by certified traffic engineer or we can just get in at least a bare minimum an engineer's opinion on whether that stop sign is or is not neat. And then at that point, that all gets put together, added to the management plan. That plan then comes here. And then y'all get to make that final decision on, yes, we're going to add that to the list. We're going to install it. And then y'all pass that. It comes back down. I get it next and I send somebody out to actually put it up. And that's for each one of them. That's why we won't look at this as a bigger deal because it's going to do, let's go do a bunch. Let's not do one at a time. That's that's a lot of work. Let's try to find and get as many done at one time, especially if it's simple like stop signs or a simple speed limit change. Um, like one of the ones that probably should be looked at, even though instructions coming soon along Avondale. But current speed over on Avondale with the new neighborhoods is a little high. I mean, it's forty-five mile an hour speed limit through there on a section where you've got a major intersection coming out of that subdivision. You have the new phase three one coming in. It's also going to be there. So we've kind of ran some numbers, just some ideas, things for y'all to start considering. You know, coming up with budget and all, but these are just, uh, like I said, we have a lot of things on there. But we think to try to at least get stop signs, speed limits on simple ones that we can jump on right away as soon as possible. Uh, then we'll probably have to come back, speed humps, things like that that take a longer process, bidding and all that stuff. I mean, that may be later on. We'll have to come back to those. But the stop signs would be the first ones to try to knock out. That's something y'all can do fairly quick. We can, the last time we did them, basically we went out and found the ones that already did have them and all the ones that needed them at that time. Got all that stuff worked up, put it all on a drawing, put it all in a written out in a ordinance, brought the whole thing at one time. Council passed it. Then it, then we started the process of installation. We had a lot of that one, we ended up having some no parking signs, if anybody remembers in front of Joe's and all along there in front of Hasslet Park that did not have them. We had trucks parking there. That's how we added those. Now that one took a little longer because again, that was a going to text out process, which takes up, anything with text out takes a while. So sooner you get something like that started, the sooner you can actually get those done. I was just Thursday. This is a lot of information, a lot of stuff on there. And sometimes you look at it and it's, man, that's a lot of stuff. That's awful scary, but it's just, you know, things are growing. I mean, we were talking today, you know, we we've got sixteen hundred water meters in the ground now. And so you start looking at, you know, what that population equates to. That's that's a big jump in this county community. And so we're just, you know, having those growing pains.
I wanted to ask Stephen to blow up on Caraway right here. So this was uh David and I, you know, we collaborated and and produced this, not as this is X marked the spot. This is what we're doing. It's always easier to start out with something that you can critique and discuss.
Once you start adding the data to this, some of this may come off. We may find we need more. We don't know. But these were, these are mostly the places we've got the most complaint right now. That's the easiest way to describe them today is the most complaint that we've had.
So I wanted to uh um, one of the residents was uh we'd been corresponding with is Ms. Johnson. And uh she came in, she was kind enough to come in today, sit with David and I, and we just went over the Caraway plan and I I took a lot of notes right here about that.
Yeah, she told us things that we didn't know were going on in the neighborhood. There's there's a bus stop that we didn't know was happening with the I S D there.
So.
That makes a difference in traffic patterns and what we consider should be or what speed limits might should be in that neighborhood.
And really, this is for you, you know, like Caraway residents. Your boots on the ground. I don't live out there. You do. So let's work together on it. And that goes for any neighborhood. You know, we'll do the same for each. Each neighborhood is unique, has its own pattern and own issues. So uh, that was real good. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Thank you on that. Uh, does that conclude the presentation?
That's pretty much it.
Very good.
Scare anybody too much. And if you have any questions, then try to answer what what we can answer, what we do know.
I do have a question.
I knew you had something. What's you got?
Um, could you clarify, um, when it says the grooved rumble strips, what exactly that means? Because I know that like it, from what I looked up, it could be two different things, so.
Grooved rumble strips, you can see the raised rumble strips. They are very high maintenance. They don't stay down very well. So they're not really great. They're good for temporary work, but not long-term. Grooved is what you see along one fifty-six. If you ever pull along that shoulder, that little twelve-inch wide area there, that's a groove. They actually cut it into the paper. Uh, and they do ones, generally they're put in as wake-up calls more than anything. They're not really, they're not deep enough to do anything besides make noise more than anything and just give you that little bit of a shake. And just give you that little bit of a shake to make you wake up and pay attention. So a lot of times they're put in, especially like a new stop sign goes in, they'll put them where the stop ahead sign is just in front of it. So you'll hit those and you'll, it'll, oh, what, what's going on? And you will focus on the road all of a sudden and you'll see that, oh, there's a new sign or something there that wasn't there before. And it reminds people, it's used a lot to remind people of what the speed limit is in someplace. You put those just before a speed limit sign and it will do the same thing. And they don't do a lot of that on, you know, high speed roads. We're talking mostly lower speed roads, but it's just as a reminder or and it's a tool to try to slow people down. It's like anything else. It's like the speed hump. That's just another type of tool that you can use for the same kind of thing. That'll make somebody, oh, I've got to slow down and think for a second here because most people, I mean, I'm guilty of it. Everyone is. When you get close to home, you're kind of on autopilot. You're not really paying attention. You're coming down your street, just getting ready to turn in the driveway and you're not really paying attention because you've done it so many times, you don't ever notice it. And so sometimes little things like that, just there's that one little bit of wake up that, oh, oh, wait a minute, I do need to look.
Kind of appealing to their conscience, the driver. Hey, you need to stop.
All right. And I got another question for you. I don't want to take up all your questions, but so you had mentioned how we were talking about doing this speed humps. This is kind of on stop signs at this point, focusing on that.
That's the main goal of this one, but we know once we start this data collection, we're probably going to find areas, especially in between stop signs, between, you know, block for block kind of things that you'll find sometimes that, oh, wow, you know, yeah, the speed limit is thirty, but in this section here, we're having a consistent deal of people going well over that. Well, that kind of starts telling you that's an area you might want to look at rumbles or you might want to look at speed hump platforms, something to make a change in their mental attitude temporarily while they're coming to the neighborhood.
And so I thought your point was interesting. You said that there, they run about five thousand and ideally you want to do about half a dozen at a time. Is that right?
Usually to get a decent price, when you call somebody and say, I got one rumble strip put in or one speed hump. They're like, it's not worth their time and trouble to mobilize, come out and do it because mobilization of the materials to do it is very was really expensive. Now asphalt's probably a bit more expensive, but it's the time and the labor to come out and do it. So there it's easier to buy a big truck load of it than it is to buy just a couple of yards at a time. It's expensive to get it brought out that way.
And so I, I guess that was kind of leading to my point of, so do you see it kind of when you get to that approach of reviewing speed humps and stuff, kind of, I know we've tackled that in some neighborhoods and not others. And so do you kind of see it as overlooking, kind of looking as a whole at all of our neighborhoods who don't have it to maybe get that?
Kind of what we've talked about is that, you know, we know we got the new ones where there's a lot of things going on. Some of the older established neighborhoods, maybe not as much, but we should start working our way through the new ones and come back to our old neighborhoods again and redo them. It, you know, it's been quite a while since the last time any of that was done. And that would be a place to, you know, come back to. I mean, I know the neighborhood you're in. Most everybody there is fairly good for the most part, but there are a few that look at that long road and like to get going a little bit faster than the rest of them. So yeah, I mean, that's, that's the same thing is we know we probably are going to have to come to most of them. Uh, of the older neighborhoods, Brentwood probably be the last neighborhood because since it's a circle, it's a little harder to get going because there's not any long areas there, but we would probably work through the new ones and then work our way back around, come back to Hassel Park, eventually back to Hugh White, even though most of that's got it, there is still part of Hugh White that doesn't have it. Granted, it's got a great big hill that scares you, scares most people and you can't go up it very fast at all. It's so steep, but so it kind of has its own issues on its own, but.
Yeah, it has a huge speed hump.
Yeah, it's, it's a really big one. And if you're coming down it, it's kind of scary. So most of the time they're on the brakes going down the thing because otherwise you get going way too fast.
So, uh, mentioning White Lane. Since the county's mobilized to restart redoing that road, I assume the ones that are already installed out there are going to go away.
No, they're going to replace every one of them.
They are.
Yeah. This is going to be a fun thing because the county has never built one before. So, but they're game to try. They, they say this, it doesn't look hard to them. So they're pretty excited. This is something new. Something they haven't done. So they're going to put them back in.
That's awesome.
Yeah, no, it's going to be, I think it'll be really good since they should be able to do it while the mixes are both still hot. So I'm assuming they should be able to make the transitions even smoother than they were before.
Very good. Any questions to the presenter?
I just had one on the, the same as the speed humps. Is there a number of stop signs that makes it to go down a little, little better deal to work?
Those are better because we can do those in-house. So buying those, putting them on a list, when the guys catch up on something, run out there, hey, drill some poles and set some posts and stuff. That's a little easier to deal with because we kind of control our own destiny. When you get into the speed humps, the ordering of the amounts of asphalt to do it and laying it and all the signage that goes with those, it's just a little bit more than we could do. At least efficiently, we can build one, but it was, the efficiency is just not there for us because we couldn't do but one maybe a day and the cost of getting a couple of yards of asphalt and getting it brought out here is so much more expensive than, oh, let's get twenty yards of it and build five of them at one time. Uh, all right.
We have one, Michelle Johnson.
I'm sorry. I didn't have my mic on. Please state your name and your address.
Okay, Michelle Johnson. The address is twelve twenty one, I mean, sorry, now I'm missing that out, twelve twenty six Caraway Lane. Um, I'm just mainly here to represent the, um, the residents of Caraway because we do have a major issue with speeding through the community and we are looking for ways to keep the children safe. So we are looking for speed limit reductions or some stop signs to be put in there because we are definitely having some issues with between construction workers, delivery drivers, residents all alike, coming through there and using it kind of like Texas Speedway. So we're just trying to keep everybody safe.
I had a question, but what is the current, I've been over there, but I don't remember what the current speed limit is.
It's thirty.
Okay. So it is thirty.
It is currently thirty and it, it's quite fast for that community because it's a fairly small community.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Is there any other, Mr. Rogers?
I forgot one thing. That's one of the things too, since these neighborhoods, the lots are so smaller. The old idea of the thirty mile an hour speed limit that we have in most of our other neighborhoods seems okay. But you gotta remember how far apart the lots are. These are so much closer and these all have sidewalk running through. So there's a lot more connectivity, a lot more people out using those sidewalks. But it's really with the house lots being smaller, you've got a lot more people, a lot more interaction with that roadway than what we have in Hassel Park, Hugh White or Brentwood. Those neighbors, those neighbors just don't have that same number of interaction with that same road stretch.
So what would be your recommendation for reduction?
That's what, it's kind of hard. I know we did one few, uh, back when Travis was here, we did a quick study once for them. Uh, and we found, uh, at that time, thirty mile an hour, where we set up at was just inside the front entryway, probably three, four hundred feet inside there off that road. Uh, that one, we had the, about the ninetieth percentile of people were going below the speed limit at that point. Of course, they just turned on the road. Most of them were going, the average was like twenty nine miles an hour. But we didn't do a deeper study. So at that point, the eighty fifth percentile, which normally in traffic control stuff, eighty fifth percentiles where you decide your speed limit is. Whatever those people are doing, that's where you usually set it. Well, the speed limit that we got, the eighty fifth percentile was twenty three miles an hour back then. It might be more, it might be less, but that's, that's one of the things about setting that trailer out. That's one of the greatest things about that thing. Not only does it tell us how many cars passed that way, what speed each one of those cars was doing, but it'll give us that data of, oh, eighty five percent of the people driving by here were at this speed. This was the average and this was the max. They'll have, there's always somebody that likes to drag race. So there's always somebody that's really going way too fast. So like this one, we were talking a little bit today, just on this one neighborhood. Uh, you're probably looking at to do a really good, decent numbers with what technology we have with our trailer. You'd probably be looking at about eight locations over a period of five to six weeks. To get all the data you would want to be able to look at all how the people funnel out the main entrance or how the few that try to funnel out towards Cascade Drive, what they do. And that would start leaning you toward what the speeds most of them are doing in the neighborhood and what we might be looking at as a change. It could be twenty, it might be eighteen. I don't know. That could be. Uh, and that's, that's a philosophy going around now. If it said twenty, they say, go to something like twenty one. Go to nineteen, go to some odd number that nobody else would do because it makes you think just because you see that odd number. If you pull up somewhere and see fourteen miles an hour, you're like, what the heck? It makes you think. If you just see twenty, you're used to seeing that a lot more often. Thirties are always something you see a lot of. So a lot of places, uh, Roanoke loves that idea. That is one of their biggest things in Roanoke. Olive Oak Street went to twenty five miles an hour because nobody uses twenty five. It's either twenty or it's thirty, never in between. But I have seen they have a few that are eighteen. There's two streets that are ninety. Just for that little factor of, oh, wow, this is different.
Very good. One, one thing I want to mention is that, you know, David's talking about eighty five percentile, the ninety percentile, et cetera. Text dot, everybody's heard of text dot, the Texas Department of Transportation regulates signage and how we set speed even in a subdivision such as Caraway. Well, everything we do on this, the data collection, you know, the data gathering as well as the analysis or the engineer's opinion, that engineer's opinion's got to be supported by something uh, that we have documented is, uh, that's, that's that process. So we're, we're doing it and we have to do to, according to text dots uh, standards, but also those data gathering tables, when we talk about that eighty five percentile, that's a magic percentile right there. And that establishes what they call the prima facie limit. Prima facie is meant, well, this is what the majority of the eighty five percent of the people travel at. And there, there you go. There's that. So, um, just a little background, we don't get to pull these numbers out of the air. And, uh, it's not all opinion. It's backed up by data and things of that nature. But text dot has, holds that standard.
So I actually have a question. Now that eighty, eighty five percentile came up. Um, a couple of months ago, when we had the trailer out on one fifty six, did we ever get a report back on what the, basically what those numbers were, what?
Uh, that wasn't asked, but we did do, we do know what they are. Uh, it was, and again, the average, everybody wouldn't believe me if I told them this, but average was below the speed limit almost consistently. But you have to remember where does the backup happen? Almost every afternoon, starting at about two thirty. And you get to where you're only driving five, six miles an hour because we had a lot of five mile an hour numbers every single afternoon.
Well, I think it'll be faster than five. I'm thinking thirty five.
Some of those numbers were really fun because it's one truck creeping along at like four or five miles an hour. And so you, you have him on there for a long time before you see the next number. It was sometimes just fifteen minutes on a few of those days. So that was terrible. That was a Friday afternoon, but that was terrible to know it took fifteen minutes for a truck to pass beyond the point where that sign was. That's, that's a little nuts. Yeah, that, and he's talking about that. What we use is the state's transportation code and the, uh, how do you pronounce all that? It is the manual on uniform traffic control device code.
And that's what will govern.
That's what we.
Particularly that school. Yeah.
Oh yeah, it is huge, but it, it has more data and more stuff in there than you ever wanted to know. Anything you ever want to know about traffic is in that. But it is, it's a lot, that's a big man.
So I have a question. Are the, uh, don't block intersection signs easier? To, are we the only?
Because they don't require anything but the pole and the mounting itself. So we don't have to deal with stop signs, have to have stop bars marking, this is where you got to stop. That's got to be a, you know, painted line or a thermoplastic line across that, you know, lane.
Plus there's no data collection needed to support.
Data collection or anything else. That's just don't block them from here to here.
So do you have to even talk to text out about that or are they?
They have to, yes. Just like the no parking signs, because if you ever wanted to have them enforced, if somebody was sitting in the middle of one and the sheriff pulls up, he wants to be able to write that ticket. You have to get there. Okay. So that it shows up on your transportation management plan. But they can always come back and say, oh, wait a minute, here's the management plan. Here it is right there. Says what you should have been doing in this zone. And so that's why you put it in there. That's why we have the ordinances. That's why we do the maps because the map's a little bit faster for them to look at and go, whoa, yeah, that's real quick. They don't have to read through the whole ordinance to find that street or that exact sign where it was located at.
When you, you're mentioning like do not block, one of the things, and it's reflected in the estimate that was provided in there. And that estimates for all these items. But nonetheless, uh, say it's such, let's say like on one fifty six and, and in front of Ashmore Farm or the Meadows or whatever the case is. Is instead of having just a sign, it'd be a sign on each side of that intersection. Instead of just one line across is having an entire hat pattern on one fifty six in front of that intersection. And with letters down there, do not block. So it gives, here's what we're talking about. Don't block this area. Be out of. Uh, you just got to be very explicit today for folks. Uh, if that's, uh, you want to go over to the, uh, just, this is a, a estimate. It's been, you know, reviewed by our engineer, just like, you know, a courtesy review. There's been no engineering applied to this plan. But for all the items that we have on here today, uh, there you are. This was estimated as to what this kind of project would be. And, you know, after the, uh, using the trailer collecting data and all that information would be forwarded to, uh, we have a traffic engineer that through our city engineer. And, uh, this would be forwarded to them and, but this is just about the magnitude of what you're looking at. You know, one day we all looked up and going, where did all these cars come from? Well, all the cars are going to look up one day. Where did all this stuff come from? It'll be overnight. Uh, so I, I do want to tell everybody, this does not get rid of any cars or trucks or anything. It's just trying to get them to be considerate and, uh, slow down, stop, don't block the intersections. That's, that's about it. Well, if we're through with the presentation, then, uh, we'll go into discussion. Uh, council, discussion, what's your thoughts on this?
I think it looks great. I think that, um, I'm excited to see what plan of action for what projects to do first and, and yeah, I think it looks, looks wonderful. I'm all for it.
Now we'll bring this back. There is some, uh, we'll call it low hanging fruit, things that we know, you know, and, and with the discussion with Ms. Johnson, you know, she gave us insight today. It's already changed, you know, and, uh, we, those things. And, uh, we, those things, we can go in and prioritize and just go ahead and hit, you know, anything to do with safety of children, Lord have mercy, you know, let's jump on it. Uh, and we got neighborhoods, you know, these neighborhoods are built to be, uh, walkable communities. So well, let's make it walkable without threatening, you know, traffic. But anyway, those will be prioritized. And the council and the different neighborhoods will be involved in that. Again, your boots on the ground. I know it's, uh, by the time you'll call a, a council person or the mayor, you know, you're already frustrated. But give us a call as early as possible. And I, I guarantee you, entire staff will help make this, you know, get a solution. Uh, the plan going forward, this is not going to sit idle. Uh, we've made, you know, just a couple of minor adjustments today. We'll look at this again and we'll just go ahead and, and we'll set that trailer out. David, we're, uh, we're gonna develop a schedule, so we'll know when it's set out, where it's set out. That'll help optimize, you know, placement of bumps if they're needed, uh, and speed limits, et cetera. And this and all the information will be sent to our city engineer and the traffic engineer. So we're not, uh, this is not gonna slow down.
Yeah, as the mayor said, I think probably like he's talking low hanging fruit, the stop signs probably are one of the first ones. And where we can put do not block on our own controlled streets, those there, those are probably gonna be the first things we're gonna try to get them all pieced together, get a drawing, get a little amendment to the ordinance put together and probably try to bring, you know, in the next couple of months, it's something, you know, something we'll be working on. Just to know how fast, you know, we find all the stuff and get it all put together. But we're something that we think we can, you know, try to get a lot of those things done quick. Then, but once the data starts coming in, that'll probably be when we get into possible. We also see there might be a speed bump also needed here, speed limit signs, and be able to bring a bigger project that might be something that we'll be looking at for an actual budget item for the coming year.
Oh, I'm sorry. If there are no other questions, then we'll move on. Uh, I wanna thank the Caraway folks for coming, don't be a stranger, okay? We increased, uh, from nine seats to 20 seats, or taking, we're being, we're in the brave new world now. Uh, so, um, don't be a stranger. Uh, item nine is, uh, executive session. The, uh, city council reserves the right to adjourn its executive session during the course of the meeting to seek legal advice from its attorney regarding any item on the posted agenda as authorized by section 551071 of the Texas Government Code. Additionally, pursuant to the provisions of chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, city council may adjourn an executive session in accordance with the authority contained in section 551072 Government Code, deliberations regarding real property purchases, exchange leases, or value of real property of deliberation in an open meeting, what have detrimental effect on position of the governmental body negotiations with a third person, very specifically as property acquisition for public facilities. So I would like to call a, just a brief recess. It is at 8:15 and that we resume into, uh, executive session and in 10 minutes.
All right, say 49 and we will resume the open session made second 2022. There is the cor- the quorum is in the chambers and let's go to item number 19, consider an act on any action resulting from a executive session. There is none. We could go to item 11, future agenda items. They want to have a future agenda item. Okay, there is none. Let's go to item 12, adjourn. May I have a motion?
I move adjourn.
Uh, motions to adjourn, is there a second?
A second.
There is a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. We are adjourned at eight forty nine P. M.